Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members are present. Approval of the agenda, we have three additions, seven H, resolution 2018-36 approving the application of Brothers Market Incorporated Doing Businesses Northside Liquor for a transfer of an off-sale license to be located at 321 Main Street North. Also, seven I, cigarette license application for the same location. And seven J, approve resolution 2018-37 approving the application of Anthony William Jensen and Mark D. Brush Doing Businesses American Tap and Eatery for a transfer of an on-sale Sunday 2:00 a.m. and off-sale license to be located at 520 Sinclair Lewis Avenue. Is there any other changes?
I just said crossing off the seven F.
Oh, seven F, right. We won't, the approval of the board of review adjustments will be scratched from the agenda. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, sign the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, April 4th, 2018, regular meeting. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the April 4th, 2018, regular meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, second by Keith?
Oh, sure.
Oh, I thought I heard you say something.
No.
Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, sign the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Abstention.
Aye.
Motion carries four in favor, none against, one abstention. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. Now brings us to our reports and presentations, 2017 audited financial statements. Miranda?
Good evening. I'm Miranda Wettland, I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen in our Alexandria office. I'm here this evening to present the results of the 2017 financial statement audit. First, I'll go through some of the required audit communications required by audit standards, then I'll review the audit results, and then finally, we'll look at some of the financial results. We'll go through the smaller packet that you have in front of you, I'm on page three right now. Our responsibility as auditors is to provide an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. We do that through a risk-based audit approach. We focus on material balances, significant transactions, and risks within the industry. We review internal controls, but we do not test the effectiveness, we're more so looking at the design of the control. We do not review 100% of the transactions, we're focusing again on those more significant areas. If there were any changes in the accounting policies, I'd bring those to your attention this evening. There were no changes for 2017, meaning your financial statements will look very consistent between 2016 and 2017. The significant accounting policies are outlined in note one to the financial statements. Within the financial statements, there are management's estimates in determining some of the account balances. Balances that we rely on management estimates include the useful lives of the capital assets, which impacts depreciation expense on an annual basis, allowance for any uncollectible accounts, the compensated absences, being the vacation and sick time accrued by city employees, the net pension liability estimated at the state level, and the city recognizes their proportionate share of that liability, as well as post-employment benefits. As auditors, we do a retrospective review of those estimates and review for management bias. We noted none. We felt the accounting estimates were reasonable and well-supported. As part of the audit, we propose adjustments. None of the adjustments that were proposed in the 2017 audit were deemed material to the financial statements, meaning that the financial statements in front of you reflect the information that is in the city's accounting system. There were three past adjustments, meaning proposed audit adjustments that management and at CLA, we agreed, were not material to the financial statements, so instead of posting them, management passed on those. Two of those have been carrying forward for several years now, and will fall off the schedule as those assets are fully depreciated, or as the loss on refunding from future, or prior bonds, is fully recognized. One of the past adjustments relates to the timing of a purchase in 2016. We felt that it should have been recorded as payable, management passed, we agreed it was immaterial to the financial statements. We review the financial statement disclosures, and we feel that they are adequate, clear, and complete. There were no disagreements with management as we performed the audit, and at the end of the audit, management made several representations to us regarding the financial statements and the fair presentation. There were no consultations with any other independent accountants, as far as we are aware, and no issues other than normal planning issues were discussed prior to our retention as auditors. There were no difficulties in performing the audit. We were onsite the week of March 12th, and we were able to finalize the audit by April 5th, which is a two-and-a-half-week turnaround, which is very impressive. That tells me that management was ready and the books were in very good order. Management is very responsive to our audit requests. The financial statements for the city include the SOC Center HRA and the SOC Center Public Utility Commission, which makes this a group audit. We rely on the opinions of the other auditors when we pull the financial data into the city's financial statements. So looking at the city's audit results, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, that's the highest level of assurance a public accountant can provide on a set of financial statements. We had identified two internal control improvements that could be made. One related to limited segregation of duties when you're working in a small environment as a finance department does here. They do their best to segregate functions, but some of the functions do overlap, so we just want you to be aware of that, that your role as reviewing and approving transactions is very important in a small operating environment. Also, the second one is the controls over financial reporting. The city outsources the preparation of the financial statements. There lies an inherent risk that as we prepare the financial statements, we could miss a material transaction, that risk is somewhat mitigated through the review of the financial statements by management, but we do want to bring that to your attention this evening. In 2017, the city received over $750,000 in federal expenditures, which triggers the requirement for a federal grant audit, or a single audit. Total federal expenditures was $1,775,000, of which about 99% of that was the airport improvement program, which we did test this year. We test compliance with federal requirements, as well as internal controls over compliance. We had no findings or recommendations in either of those categories. We also tested Minnesota legal compliance, there's seven questionnaires that were reviewed, numerous questions within each questionnaire, and we noticed no instances of noncompliance. Finally, if we look at the 2007 operating results, on page eight, you can see the cash balances for the general fund in the first set of bars there, and then the other governmental funds are grouped together. Overall, cash in the general fund decreased about $145,000 from prior year, primarily due to the timing of transactions, waiting on some payments, also some accounts payable, payments that haven't been made yet as of the end of the year. The other governmental funds, there was an increase in your cash balances. Overall cash at the end of the year was 9.3 million, which is an increase from 8.8 million in the prior year. Fund balances, these are the city's reserves at the end of the year, what's left to be, or available for spending. In the general fund, there's five months of expenditures available in your general fund fund balance. Unassigned fund balance, meaning funds that are not restricted by an outside source or committed to other projects, totaled about 1.2 million at the end of the year. Looking at page 10, we have a high-level view of the governmental revenues by category. Your largest category in 2017 was your intergovernmental revenues. You'll see that there's quite an increase over the prior year. Again, that's related to that airport improvement project, you're receiving federal and state aid for that. Overall, your other categories here, property taxes, there's a slight bump there, and special assessments, minor decrease there. So at high level, looking at your governmental fund revenues, there was a $1.6 million increase between '16 and '17. Your largest category, intergovernmental revenue, followed by property taxes at 21% of the total revenues. Page 12 is the expenditures by function. Not a lot of fluctuation in the primary functions there. You'll see quite a bit of fluctuation in your debt service and capital project expenditures, that relates to timing of debt payments, as well as any significant capital projects would cause a fluctuation between years. The capital expenditures are primarily covered with grants or bonds, bonds issued to cover the project costs. Total expenditures increased 1.6 million between '16 and '17, again related to your airport Alright, so some of the key financial takeaways. The audited financial statements are due June 30th, we will get those submitted well ahead of the deadline, as well as the federal reporting requirements will be submitted within the next week or so. Overall, governmental revenues exceeded the prior year by 1.6 million. The hospital special revenue fund received about $253,000 in interest on that working capital loan. That capital loan balance was 6.7 million at the end of '17. The tax increment financing fund had some activity this year with the sale of the racetrack property, that was sold for 500,000, and that leaves the remaining land held for resale balance of 920,000. The general fund experienced a 7% increase in fund balance, and the capital project fund had a deficit at the end of the year due to spending on the 2018 projects. That deficit will be recovered in future years with the issuance of bonds. And your debt service fund, payments were made in accordance with the regular scheduled debt service schedules. I'd like to thank everyone involved in the audit process, it's very, very smooth here, and as you can tell with our quick turnaround date on issuance, everything goes pretty well. Are there any questions with the financial results or audit process?
Questions, concerns? Heidi and I, as financial committee, sat and went through this earlier this afternoon, and didn't see anything. The other three of you see anything, or have anything to state? Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Six B, police department monthly report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, activity report for March 2018. Some of the numbers we had for March, we had 14 alarm calls, we did 56 business assists, we did 35 assists for other agencies, we had 29 citizen contacts, we had eight citations given out for a small amount of marijuana and drug paraphernalia, we had 11 juvenile problem calls, we had 18 medicals, nine vehicle accidents, 23 school patrol, 56 special details, we had 24 suspicious calls we had, we had seven thefts, we had seven welfare checks, we gave out 283 verbal warnings, we also had 10 verbal disputes to take care of. And comparing that to 2017, we were up by ICRs by 66, and up we gave 52 more warnings, so we had a total of 40, 200, or 148 up on calls. And then compare that to last month, we're up by 60 on calls, up 60 for warnings, so up 120. We, the new part-time gentleman has passed his background, physical and psychological tests, so will be, as soon as he gets his post license here, then, or his number will be getting him training, except for the training hours, so it should be right away.
Good. Any questions for Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Ambulance department quarterly reports. Tim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the first quarter of 2018, we had a total of 181 total runs, which is pretty comparable to the last couple of years. Of those, we billed out 148 billable patients, we had 30 no loads, most of those were crash-related because of the winter weather. We had 64 transfers to 15 different hospitals throughout Minnesota and even North Dakota, and we billed out 164,000, approximately 164,000 dollars in bills. We also helped the girls' basketball team, we escorted them into town one evening, and we also helped Melrose in an incident that they had, that they needed additional assistance. So that's the quarter in a nutshell. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
I see you got to use that Lucas machine at least once.
Yes, we did.
That's good.
Those are really assets to the crew, so, good equipment.
Thank you.
Busy as usual.
Yes, always.
Thank you. Six D, planning commission report. Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We had our, a short meeting on April 10th, and we had our building permit reports for January, February, and March, with those totals. This year's construction for those, for the month of January is 44,000, and a year ago was 69,000. February this year was 5,000. Last year in February was 466,000, which was either the bank, I think might have helped add to that number, and then other miscellaneous permits. And during the month of March this year, we did 577,000 dollars, and I believe most of that is for the Dollar Tree, for that construction value, and a year ago, again, we were at 516,000 dollars. The zoning permits are listed, and that's about all I have on my report, so if you have any questions.
Questions, concerns? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Now move on to our action items. Seven A, accept 2017 audited financial statement.
As you said, this action is actually to formally accept the audited financial statements that were presented by Miranda earlier this evening. Unless you have any questions or any reason not to accept it, we would request that you accept those statements as presented.
Questions? Do I have a motion to accept the audited financial statements for 2017?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, sign the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven B, approve resolution 2018-31 authorizing purchase of life pack.
The ambulance department has three life packs through the defibrillators. We have, one is the older model, it's no longer supported by the software. The operations committee reviewed the proposal of the ambulance department to replace the older life pack, and recommend that the department be given permission to proceed with the purchase. And I do have resolution 2018-31 approving the purchase of the life pack for your consideration, and then I also have the quote down there, you can see what the total cost of that will be, 27,961-11, and this is a state bid price.
Questions, comments?
What's the lifespan of these life packs?
We maybe want to talk to Tim about that.
I believe we had the old life packs for about 15 years.
Okay.
So, you know, roughly about, I would say about time span, 15, 20 years, would be a good guesstimate, anyway. We also enter into a service contract with these, so we're kind of locked into the company that we've been dealing with, and they're really good at replacing, you know, parts and stuff that do wear out through the service contract.
This is also something that I think you guys discussed at budget time, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's in our capital improvement plan.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-31 approving the purchase of the life pack? So moved. We got a motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, sign the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven C, approve resolution 2018-32 authorizing bids for ambulance.
The operations committee was presented with a proposal for the purchase of an ambulance to replace our 2009 unit. This purchase will continue the city's nine-year rotation plan for the vehicles. At the time, then, we learned that Centricare would be purchasing multiple ambulances for other locations, and perhaps we could join in on theirs to get like a bulk discount, and so staff did reach out to Centricare, we reviewed the specifications for those ambulance that they proposed to purchase, and we discovered that specifications aren't really in alignment with what we use. Our ambulance, actually, the bodies are a little bit larger, makes it more room for the EMTs to ride in the back with the patients, and so the savings that would be realized by buying from Centricare is pretty negligible when you compare what we would be giving up by going with that type of rig. And so the department is requesting that the city allow them to go out there through the state bidding process, and seek bids for a new ambulance compared to our existing ones, so that when they get in the back of the rig, everything is in the same place as it is in each rig. The one thing to note, if you remember several years ago, Ford discontinued the diesel engine in the cutaway model for the ambulance, and now I understand that Chevy will be doing the same, so we probably will be having, without a choice, having to go with the gas model, so there may be some dollar savings there as well. But what we're looking for tonight is just to approve the resolution authorizing us to seek formal solicitation of bids. We've done PSVM Lifeline, I believe it is, are the two different companies that really propose these ambulances, but they will come back with more detail after you give them permission to proceed that route.
Questions?
This would put you, when are you looking to get, if you do get one, when would it be arriving?
100 days, 180 days out after approval.
After approval, okay.
That's after we accept the bid.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a ways out then.
It would be wintertime, next winter, not this winter.
Yeah, that's true.
Possibly.
If winter quits.
Yeah, if winter quits.
And, you know, years ago, we started this nine-year rotation with the ambulances, and reading what they have said about what Centricare is using in smaller rigs and stuff, kind of would, if we did go with that, it would put us back to where that one ambulance that we got rid of didn't have room in it, and some patients that had to ride in it, even though it was our third unit, said it was like riding in the back of a, on the bed of a pickup.
Well, I suppose a smaller one is pretty maneuverable in a larger city or town.
Well, these other services all run with two-man crew, and they will only transport one patient, whereas we'll run three-man crew and we can transport two, or even more sometimes, so.
Yeah, so I could obviously see the reason why we wouldn't want to go with that, back to that type of ambulance again. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-32 authorizing solicitation of bids?
Motion approved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments or concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, sign the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven D, approve resolution 2018-33 accepting 2018 North Project bids.
I had in your packet for you the resolution to award the project for the 2018 capital improvement project, and you have that in front of you, however, we still have the easement agreement that you approved at the last meeting, and then the representatives from the Click Foundation verbally approved it at the meeting. However, the attorneys are having language back and forth, making sure the terms are exactly on both sides. Our attorney drafted the agreement, their attorney is reviewing it, and so you have the option of either awarding this contingent on getting that, or just waiting until we receive that and maybe award at the next meeting. I don't know that it makes a lot of difference, I mean, next meeting, we're intending on having a public information meeting ahead of it, and it may be good to have that public information meeting ahead of awarding it. It's kind of up to you, I think, I talked to Keith before the meeting, I think it may have a little bit of a wait before we can get everything in motion for the project itself, but then again, it would have to be contingent on receiving that signed document anyway, so I'm going to let that up to you to see if you are comfortable awarding it, just contingent on receiving it, or if you just want to wait until the next meeting and do it at that time.
I, I'm okay waiting, it's only two weeks, and I would bet that they're not going to sort the easements out before then, anyway. So I don't think if we, you know, if we delayed it, I don't think it'll make any difference.
I am too, I think it would probably, you know, offer them a chance to hear more on the project, to...
So then, if that's the way you want to go, then you would just table this action, yeah?
Sounds good.
Do I have a motion to table it?
Motion to table.
We got a motion by Dave.
I'll second.
And seconded by Diane, to table this action until the next council meeting. All those in favor, sign the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve resolution 2018-34 accepting quote for compact utility tractor.
At the council meeting on April 4th, the council authorized us to obtain bids from local vendors and the state bid for the replacement of our New Holland Compact Utility Tractor, and at that time, the council also approved minimum specifications for the tractor. We did get written bids from five different vendors, however, of the two of those, the two Massey Ferguson tractors don't meet the minimum specifications for PTO horsepower output. So those two Massey Ferguson tractors from Lake Henry Implement would be eliminated, leaving the two Kubotas from Arnold St. Martin and Alex Power Equipment, and the John Deere from Midwest Machinery being the three tractors that remain. And of those, the John Deere 4066R is the lowest bid at 38,700, so we're requesting that the city approve resolution 2018-34, accepting that quote for the purchase of the
Questions, concerns? This was a budget item, or a capital improvement item, so do I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-34 approving purchase of John Deere 4066R from Midwest Machinery? So moved. And a motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments or concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, sign the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven F was removed. Seven G, approve resolution 2018-35 authorizing forfeited property for sale.
The police department has three additional... The police department has three additional vehicles that have been released for sale through the, and we want to sell those through the online bidding system. Those have been forfeited to the city for drug or alcohol convictions. And then there's a 22 caliber H&R handgun that has also been forfeited to the department. Police Chief Fredericks is requesting permission to offer, to offer for sale, the 2000 Ford Focus, a 2003 Ford Explorer and a 2003 GMC Yukon. And then we're also furthering, further requesting authorization to sell the 22 caliber handgun to a licensed FFL dealer. And that is a requirement that we have, if we're going to sell the firearm, it has to go through an FFL dealer. In the past, we've used, and Brian has left, but we usually use the general store and a lot of times we take it out in trade like for ammunition or something like that. So, what we're looking to do is approve Resolution 2018-35 Declaring The Property Excess And Authorizing Advertising For Sale.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-35 Declaring Property Excess And Advertising For Sale? So moved. Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7H Approve Resolution 2018-36 Approving Application Of Brothers Market Incorporated Doing Business As Northside Liquors For A Transfer Of An Off-Sale License To Be Located At 321 Main Street North.
What this application is for, what this request is, is that the Gas Mart of Sock Center and including the Northside Liquors has been sold to a new owner and they're requesting a transfer of the off-sale liquor license. And that off-sale liquor license comes with a council action. There's no public hearing required to transfer a license at an existing location. They have a $100 transfer fee to the city and then we have to do the background check and verify workers' comp and that gets sent to the state. The transfer date is actually May 1st on this one and so we're looking for the council to approve Resolution 2018-36, which approves the application for the transfer of the Northside Liquor License Liquor To Brothers Market, Inc.
Did you say a background check has been made?
That has already been done through the police department, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-36?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Cigarette License Application.
This goes right along with the same, same for the Gas Mart. We have applications for Brothers Market to sell cigarettes and they have two licenses, one at the liquor store and one at the Gas Mart. So, this, just, I just need the approval of the city council to approve those two new cigarette licenses.
Comments, concerns?
Again, the background check or is there none required?
There isn't one required for cigarettes.
Okay. Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve the two cigarette licenses, one to Northside Liquors, the other one to Gas Mart of Sock Center?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7J Approve Resolution 2018-37 Approving The Application Of Anthony William Jensen And Mark D. Brush Doing Business As American Tap And Eatery For A Transfer Of An On-Sale Sunday 2:00 AM And Off-Sale License To Be Located At 520 Sinclair Lewis Avenue.
Warren kind of just did the whole staff report there. This is a transfer of the liquor license from what was, we know as the Palace on Sinclair Lewis Avenue. That is being transferred over to William Jensen and Mark D. Brush and they will be opening up a bar and an eatery, more like a tap house type bar with more beer selections and then more eatery foods. They do have an appointment on Monday to meet with Jane Knott from Stearns County regarding their food license, to get that finalized and they will also be meeting with our city building inspector regarding the hood vent and those types of things kind of fall into that purview. The background check and those types of things are pending and so what I would like to do, if you approve this license transfer, is to make it contingent upon all the final documentation rolling through our office. The other option would have been to wait two weeks, but then we'd be having the same conversation again in two weeks after we get everything finalized. And so, the liquor license itself is an annual fee that runs July 1st till June 30th. The, the license fee, if there's a proration, that's between the buyer and the seller. That doesn't involve the city. We don't, we don't give a refund and then attach a new one. They will work that out between themselves, but we would have the $100 transfer, transfer fee. And so they do have the on-sale, they have the Sunday, they have the 2:00 AM and they have off-sale. So, they kind of have the whole shebang. So, we're looking to approve Resolution 2018-37 Approving The Transfer Contingent Of Receipt Of The Balance Of The Documents And A Successful Background Check.
Comments, concerns? I do agree with Vicki that we should do this pending the insurance and the background check.
Contingent, yeah.
And the one thing I wanted to, their background is like at Bugaboo Bay in Alexandria and Dulittle, so these are people that have been in the business before. It's not somebody that's just starting up.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-37 Approving Transfer Contingent On Receipt Of All Documents Including Insurance And Successful Background Check? So moved. Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Keith. Any other comments or concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished Business. Set Information Meeting For 2018 Improvement Project.
As we've been working through this 2018 project, once we got closer to the project, it was our intent to set a public information meeting and what that information meeting would do is kind of review, review the project itself and, and how it's going to go forward, also how it would be phased, things about traffic control, what's in year one, what's in year two, so what they would be, what, what's going to be expected and what they'll have to do. And at that time, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation, which will be a short presentation, then it'll be more opportunity just to ask questions and then also some time for them to have little one-on-one questions, maybe if they have something specific to their parcel that they want to talk to the engineer about. So, if you decide to set this meeting, we're recommending to do it prior to the next council meeting, like at 5:30 on May 2nd. And we would then mail invitations out individually to everybody to make sure that they are aware of the meeting. So, we would look to set that meeting for May 2nd at 5:30 here at City Hall.
Comments, concerns?
This, we wouldn't be doing any voting on this at that time.
The 5:30 meeting is a public information meeting and then at 6:30 is the regular council meeting.
On the 2nd of May?
Yes.
Oh.
That's May 2016.
Sheesh.
I got 2015.
Well, here's 15.
Yeah. One of the things is, is an hour long enough? Or should we?
That's up to you. If you want to send, if you want to back it up, we can back it up. You want to back it up to 5 o'clock?
I would think, depending on the amount of people that should, might show up, I think an hour and a half would give.
Might be best to give extra.
Yeah, okay.
Because I don't want to all of a sudden get into a lot of public input or discussion and then have to shut down the, there to start the meeting at 6:30. So, if we can give them an extra half an hour, I do, I think it'd be just...
I anticipate that the more of the time will be spent, kind of when you're done, when they have the opportunity to look at the plan directly with the engineer and say, "Look at my house, what is this going to look like?" More so than the open part.
Right. And, and the other thing is, is, you know, they understand that there's not going to be a redesign type thing where they're going to come in, "No, we don't like this, it's going to get changed" to that, you know, it, the bids have been put out and just so the public understands that. So, do, is it to a general consensus that we set the meeting for May 2nd at 5 o'clock?
The reason I asked about the voting, I will not be in attendance at that meeting. I have to have family.
Strictly information, yep.
Yeah. For this one?
As long as you don't need a unanimous, you know.
No, I don't think so.
No.
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 So, general consensus, May 2nd at 5 o'clock?
Sounds good.
Fine? Okay.
I think you should set it at 2:30 then, so you get a good...
Yeah, sure. As long as you're not going to be here anyway.
You won't be here.
Getty Street Project Bid Opening April 19th, 2018.
So, that is tomorrow, so that'll be our next project, so the Getty Street improvement will be bid opening tomorrow, so we would expect to have that at the council meeting on May 2nd for your consideration as well. And this was just kind of informational for you.
Okay. Airport Entrance Road Paving Project Bid Opening May 1st, 2018.
Right, that bid opening is the, the first at, uh, May 1st, but that's at 10 o'clock in the morning and that one you won't, I don't believe you'll award that one right away because we wait then for the grant agreement. And the grant agreement, the fiscal year of the grant, I think, starts July 1st, so we have a little different year.
All right. Any questions on those last two items? Okay. We have no new business and now brings us to our consent agenda. We have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of 104,870.12, paid claims of 652.25 for a total of 105,522.37 and marked checks totaling 487,520.66. We have a gambling application for an exempt permit request from Sock Center Lions Club for pull tabs and raffle for July 26th through the 29th, 2018, at the Stearns County Fairgrounds. And we have a gambling application for exempt permit request from the Knights of Columbus Council 4863 for bingo and raffle for July 25th through the 29th, 2018, at the Stearns County Fairgrounds. Is there any questions on the consent calendar as presented? Do I have a motion to approve consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational Items?
Just a couple of things informational. Joe Jensen advanced to step seven of the police unit pay scale effective April 7th, 2018. He's completed his second year as sergeant for the department now, because he started there at step five. And then also we have the safety committee meeting minutes for you that have been posted up in the, on the bulletin board as well. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions on those two informational items? That now brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.